Well, why don't you join me up here? Welcome, everybody. It's our 5:30 presentation period time. We have two presentations today. It's it's an honor. We had a photo contest here in the city of Desert Hot Springs where people go around and take some photos and they got judged. And Jaime Lopez, would you join me up here? Roberta is going to explain how the contest came about and and how they picked the winner and and talk about our winner a little bit.
Yeah, so this is our second year doing the photo contest. And this year we had several submissions. They were either a beautiful landscape, hometown pride, or animals. So they had three categories that you can submit. And Jaime submitted one, and then all of the pictures get compiled into a PowerPoint. And there's no name or anything, so it's anonymous, and it gets sent to our city council. And the picture with the most votes wins. And Jaime's photo, zero, oh, there it is, won. And so we're recognizing him today, and his photo is actually on at the billboard on Palm and Dillon. So if you drive by, take a look at it. There it is. All right. Congratulations, Jaime. I'm very proud that one of our own won the contest this year.
Jaime, on behalf of the mayor and the city council, we wanted to say thank you for being the 2024 photo contest winner. It was awesome. Thank you.
I wrote I wrote some words here. Thank you, Mayor Mares, members of city council, and everyone involved in the in this contest and for the opportunity. I call this photo Dancing in the Sunset after a long and rainy day of just that just wouldn't stop. It finally broke, and we finally had a beautiful sunset. You know, it was one of those days where it just looked finally refreshed. So to me, actually, this photo feels like an analogy to Desert Hot Springs. It's no secret that we've had our challenges along the years. Of course, this is, you know, one of those rainy days. But, you know, those rainy days shape us and make us stronger. And so but after it finally broke, you know, it basically, you know, us stepping into a brighter future. I want to thank everybody who encouraged me to enter the contest, first of all. Gracias a mis padres por todo el apoyo. And and thank you to everybody, you know. Thank you.
Jump back here, you're gonna take a picture. Someone else is gonna take a picture.
I know.
Carrie can't hear you.
Councilmember, yeah, go to the edges. There you go. Yeah, open it. All right. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
So we we have a special guest with us today. And so February is always known as Black History Month, and Desert Hot Springs, I think, always does it up really well, to be honest with you. Our high school has called the Taste of Soul coming up. You know, we have a very active African-American community. And recently, I was at the Martin Luther King Junior event at the First Baptist Church, and I was recognized as a community leader. And I was I was actually able to say a few words, but it wasn't being there to get the award. What was what was rewarding about being there was seeing the community come together and the people that came out. And the kids were dancing, and the congregation was singing. And it was just a wonderful start to February coming quickly and now us celebrating Black History Month. So Naim Noriega is going to come up. Did I say it right, Naim? Got it right. He's gonna come up. He has some he has some thoughts that he would like to share with us.
All right, how's everyone doing today? We doing good? All right, that's what I love to hear. All right, so one of the many topics that I wanted to present to you all was about communities. Now, I wanted to talk about my own community and how we feel. So I was going around asking sort of anyone who is in this demographic or is involved in this particular group. I just went around and asked about what they felt like they could do with black communities or present themselves more. And one of the things that they talked about was they wanted to be heard, but they feel like they don't have the possibility of being heard or having the people to be heard. And I wanted to think personally on myself. I feel like I have a space where I can personally speak about who I am, especially to all of you guys. Even to people who I haven't seen before, I feel like I can speak about my community about that. But there are other people, other black people, who don't really have that advantage, who can't speak out and tell their own stories. So I would love to I would love to make sure this February, we do something with that. And also, what's a community without having more people involved? Like, we don't just need black people involved. We could have many other races involved. We can have just a whole little thing set up to where we have every community involved and not feel left out. And I wanted to go into a little bit of the historical factor of that. Because, as we all know, black people weren't really given that spotlight. We're usually like pushed to the side of don't really hear what they want to hear. And I want to take this opportunity to give you a Latin phrase that I just heard today. You probably even heard it too. So this Latin phrase, dobito ergo conido ergo sum. Hopefully, I'm saying that right. It means, I doubt, therefore I think, therefore I am. I want you guys to think about that. I myself, I don't know the true meaning of that, but I want to think I know the meaning of that. What I believe that means is if you doubt yourself, you will continue thinking that, and that's what you will become. If someone that you trust says anything about doubting you, you will think that, and you will become that. So it's important that we have a community that we build to make sure we don't have any doubts. We know that all of us together can build something magnificent. That's it.
When do you turn 18?
Around six months.
Okay, because my seat's up in three years, so they might be looking for a new mayor very soon. We're gonna have to get you involved in politics. He speaks well. He speaks from the heart, and thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Absolutely, sir.
I may ask your parents to come up, please. Bring the whole tribe. No, you can stand right right behind him.
Come up with me. See, this is my community right here. I'm happy for this community right here.
The mother said, you're gonna ask us up? Yes, I am, because they produced him, and they deserve attention too.
Thank you, guys.
And and one thing I wanted to mention, too, that's really important about this month is it's about Black History, but it's about the diversity of the city of Desert Hot Springs. City of Desert Hot Springs has been known as the most diverse city in the Coachella Valley, and it proves it right here today. We'll come back, and we'll have the Black History Committee here, and we're gonna give them this proclamation for the Black History Month, so we'll do it then. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna be recessed until 6 o'clock. Everybody's so attentive. It's so quiet. It is 6 o'clock. We're gonna get started. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs, regular meeting of the city council, and the city council serving as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pitts, here. Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Councilmember Voss.
Present.
Mayor Proton Gardner.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Jan Pye.
Sometimes we just have to be nice. And I've been getting from Linda Lee, I've been getting early morning stuff. And just to give a, for instance, on Sunday, she had sent to me, good morning, may your day. And, oh, shoot, I need glasses. Okay, good morning. Welcome to a beautiful new day. Before that, whatever makes you feel bad, leave it. What makes you smile, keep it. Good morning, may your day start great, and just keep getting better. And that helps me start my day, and all she did was just be nice.
Very nice. Thank you very much. Would everybody rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your hand over your heart and join me in pledging to our nation's flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, anything to report out from closed session?
No, there's no reportable action.
As announced in the last meeting, you guys probably see a familiar face sitting at the city attorney's seat. The city of Desert Hot Springs, Jennifer Mizrahi, served us for many, many years, and then she left the firm that was serving us to go work for a different firm. That firm decided that they weren't a public agency firm and decided that they weren't going to continue with public agency attorney services, and Jennifer's firm that she's working for now came back to us. So she's been reappointed as the city attorney for the city of Desert Hot Springs, so welcome her back. With that said, we're gonna go to the approval of the agenda. Before we approve the agenda, there's multiple items on the consent calendar. Does anybody like to pull anything off the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number eight.
Any other items from the consent calendar? Before we approve the consent calendars, anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any items on the consent calendar besides item eight? I see nobody coming forth. We'll close public comments on the consent calendar. At this time, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda. A motion's been made to approve the agenda with the item number eight being pulled to the administrative calendar. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving to public comments. At the time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Comments are be limited, and speakers, all comments are to be directed to the city council, shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. I'm gonna start with Matthew.
As I heard that the hub has changed and a lot of the homeless people are having issues because they're complaining about being dropped off in Riverside in different places, being separated from their dogs. But I'm not here to complain. I'm here to say that, you know, God is a, he's the master potter, and he he could take anything that's broken and fix it. And I think that we can do the same and walk in his image. And I'm pleading to the people because they can't just do it all themselves, and whoever's watching. I've left my phone number with the the city, and if you guys want to reach the city, my name is Matthew Young. Can I give them my phone number?
You can say whatever you like.
And I think that's all I have to say on. And it's it's a good thing that you were building a park for the baseball team and for children. There's a lot of kids riding dirt bikes in the hills, on trails. It's a very sacred place for people to just get, like, go hiking and stuff and get away from the from the, you know, the rat race. So and there's a lot of kids, and I've noticed that people are at night, you know, up and down the streets. And I'm concerned that, you know, these the drug dealers are probably having people of of young ages to go up and down and deliver drugs. I'm not sure, but this is the stuff that I've noticed. But I have noticed that I think the police are doing a a good job, I think, because I I don't get asked if I want to buy drugs when I walk up and down the street helping people anymore, so that's good. I do want to say good job on the things that you guys have accomplished. I only notice the things that we could do better on, unfortunately. I just I just think, you know, no, we should all make decisions with not just our hearts, because sometimes our hearts can be misleading. But just a very conscious decision on just making the right decision, just for, not just for one part of people, but like for everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Matthew. Kent Anderson.
Hi, I wanted to welcome our new council members and our returning council members. I haven't had a chance to do that, so welcome, everybody, and I hope we have an exciting year. I wanted to talk about a couple of things. One is the animal control over at our city yard. I walk every morning, or most every morning, and those dogs are really going crazy. It gets very loud over there, and I have people, friends that live on Brittany Street, which is just over. They hear them constantly, and I'm worried about the fact that if we do start this park, when the construction starts, those dogs are gonna go crazy. So I really think we should just merge and put them all over at Palm Springs. If we're gonna keep that facility over there, there's plenty of area over there to park the vehicles behind a gated fence. They've got more kennels, everything that we need. And I think it'd be better to do it sooner rather than later. Also, I would like if we could get more news about what's happening in our city. We do a lot of big fan fairs about things that are happening. The new fire department or fire building out on the east side. I went and saw the groundbreaking. I haven't heard a thing about it since then. Could we get a, maybe someone from the city take a picture and say, hey, look how far along this thing has come? We're maybe a month away or two months away, something to let us know what's going on. The animal hospital, I know you've run into some problems getting a veterinarian and stuff, but put something out so that people know what's going on. You see it on Facebook all the time. What's happening? Oh, the city doesn't care. But if we let them know what's happening, it'll help. I also want to commend the police department because of the fact that statements that they put out about road closures or traffic accidents, those are really spot on and really help a lot of people make decisions getting in and out of the city. So I know we can do it, so it'd be really great if we could get everybody to do it. And finally, just a final note, I work with the citizens on patrol. I just want to put this out to the residents. If you see us out there blocking the road off, we're not doing it because we want to make you mad. We're doing it because we're trying to help the officers and get them off the street, off of that spot, and let them do their job. So please, listen to us. Don't come up and yell and scream, which we get all the time, or try to go around us. You know, we're trying to do a job to help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Thank you for everything you do. Larry Peters.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the Desert Hot Springs Historical Society, of which I recently discovered, to my surprise, I am the vice president. You know how that goes with nonprofits, right?
Yes.
If if you like to look at maps, then we need you. If you like to look at old brochures, boxes of yellow newspaper clippings, all of those things are the history of our city. And that's what we have in the back corner of the Rock House, our little treasure, our boutique museum here in Desert Hot Springs. And we need people who like to organize to help us to put that together. You will note I'm not using the V word, the volunteer word, because that will shut people down instantly. We also are, we've already planted a demonstration vegetable garden there, and we are already harvesting tomatoes, beans, peas, kale. We need people to help us with the gardens. Our next endeavor is going to be a butterfly garden, because we want to bring the monarchs back to Desert Hot Springs. We have members who have said that they used to come here in flocks, and I'd like to know what happened to them. So we want to bring them back, and we need help with that. I also want to call your attention to a couple of events coming up. Saturday, March 1st, at 11 o'clock, at the Rock House, 66050 Third Street, just two doors in from west, east of west. That talk will be the Early Entrepreneurs of Desert Hot Springs. And it will be presented by M.J. Altolt, Irene Rodriguez, who's the director of our Cabot's Museum, and Nicole Meyer, who is a life story producer. She does living histories. And then on April 16th, at 5:30, the last of our soup suppers for the season, and one of our favorite speakers, Carrie Berman, is going to be talking about Desert Hot Springs, the city of health and fitness. Whatever happened to that? One of the things I find out in the Historical Society is the number of successful things that have happened here that have gone away. I mentioned this to an old member, and I said, what, they used to have like a theater group here. What happened to that? And I started a garden group here a couple of years ago, and she said, oh, you know, 10 years ago, they had a garden group, but then the guy that did it left. And I don't I don't think the Historical Society is one of those that we can let that happen to. We just got a house here, our our Rock House, which I don't know any community of any size that wouldn't be proud of that little treasure right there. So we need some help with that, and I I'm appealing to you and to to come to our events, because they're always interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for everything you're doing. Congratulations on your appointment to vice president. Before you know it. Irene Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Irene Rodriguez. I'm the executive director for Cabot's Pueblo Museum. So a couple of things. I really want to congratulate the Recreation Center for earning its certified autism center. It really encouraged me to maybe the Pueblo Museum being part of that as well. And then I wanted to share that I met with the resident of Desert Hot Springs whose son thinks that the Cabot's Pueblo Museum is the number one place to be, just a three second for him. And then another thing is one of the neighbors of Cabot's Pueblo Museum contacted me because she's concerned about the stop sign at Repulso Way in there's review. Because many, some drivers do don't stop, roll it, and I've seen it a couple of times, but I think she's seen it more. So I don't know what we could do at that particular stop sign, especially at the hillside. And they do tend to drive really fast down the hill. You could hear them by the museum. And then we have a special event on February 21st to the 23rd. It's a cultural weekend. It's a fundraiser for the museum where we bring master potters from Martor Tishiwawa. They will sell their goods, and the museum receives 25%. And if the weather's good, we'll be firing two pots a day, and then there will be auctioning it off. So you'll see the whole process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irene. Thanks for everything you do. I'm gonna put Kent up there with the C O P car. Let them wag their fingers and yell at them then. That road's small enough. I think you could block that road off. I have no other public comments. Anyone in the audience want to make any public comments before we close public comments? All right, we're gonna move to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, want to provide an update very specifically to Kent Anderson, but all the others in the community who have absolutely been letting us know their desire to have more communication from the city. So your your voices. us know their desire to have more communication from the city. So your, your voices have been heard. Um, at the last council meeting, we did introduce to the city council, Saida Hernandez, uh, who we have hired. So we now have officially a full-time governmental affairs and communications manager, uh, for the city of Desert Hot Springs. And just before coming into the council meeting, I actually was per, uh, previewing a template for a community newsletter that will be, uh, released, uh, towards the end of this month. So, uh, very much working on that and very excited to get that out to the community, um, and, and getting all those updates out there. Um, next, I'm going to ask Roberta Cernick, our Recreation and Community Programs Director, to provide an update.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Um, this is actually an announcement that I'm really excited about. Um, and it is to announce that the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center has officially achieved the Certified Autism Center designation. Um, we are the first organization here in Desert Hot Springs to obtain it. Um, and so the certification not only equips our staff with the skills to support individuals with autism and sensory sensitivities, but it also ensures our, our facilities foster understanding, safety, and acceptance for all. And I think it's a really important step towards building a inclusive city. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Roberta. That concludes our updates.
All right. Mayor and council member comments. Start with Mr. Voss.
Well, I'm really happy to hear about the autism certification. My nephew has autism. So when I saw that the other day, I was really excited to see that. I think it's real important as well. So that's great to hear. Um, kind of short. Uh, on the 22nd, uh, I met with myself and council member Pitts. We met with, um, Tom Kirk with CVAG, just to get an overview of what's kind of going on with CVAG and the different committees and kind of how we can be more engaged with them and, and the Coachella Valley and that kind of thing and, and do the things that we want to do to help Desert Hot Springs. So that was cool. Uh, the last week, the California League of Cities, we went to the new council members conference and, uh, that was, that was really good, too. Um, you know, it was nice to see all the different council members. There were just a couple or few from the Coachella Valley area and then outer areas of people that we knew and kind of that interacting with them. Got to hear a little bit from, uh, uh, the, one of the council members from Malibu, who was dealing with their fire and the, the issues they're dealing with, with the bureaucracies. And she and I had a really good talk because remember, we had our flood stuff. So they were, had some questions of that nature, too. Um, but otherwise, I think the classes were very informative. The information was informative and it was really nice as a new council member to go there, meet a lot of our fellow peers in other cities and get some new updates and stuff like that for us. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pye.
I want to talk about something with traffic. And what you need to do, first of all, is my DHS. We had a traffic accident and from Varner, starting at Varner, you could not go through. Well, I look at the news at 5:00 in the morning, but I got from my DHS that the road was closed at Varner and that I should try a different, uh, route. Well, I picked the wrong route because I took Mountain View to Varner. Varner is in Cathedral City. So nobody told me Varner was all the way backed up. I, I have to go to Palm Desert frequently and I leave an hour ahead. This time because my DHS said, you gotta do something different. I took Varner and I left at a quarter to eight to be there at nine. I didn't get there to 9:30. Other people took Pearson to 62 and got there right away. So I just picked the wrong way. But if you don't have my DHS, you need to get it. It tells you when the road is closed and it will tell you when it's open. Uh, another thing about, um, what, um, Ms. Williams said regarding the animal show, uh, animal hospital, it is now called Greater Palm Springs Animal Allies. And they're shooting to be opened by April 1. And that's the type of stuff that will be in your newsletter. Um, the other thing is again, talking about the kids and we have good kids in Desert Hot Springs. Do the right thing. Um, Gerald, would you please? Um, this time it was Koana Gamble, Desert Hot Springs Middle School, eighth grader. And for her, this student's journey is a testament to the power of growth and determination, starting at DSMS. They face significant, she faced significant challenges, including involvement in drama and trouble that culminated in a physical altercation, resulting in injuries to others, including a staff member. At one point, the student's future at DSMS was uncertain, even facing possible expulsion. After leaving DSMS, the student took time to reflect, grow, and make meaningful changes in their life. Upon returning to DSMS as an eighth grader, this student has demonstrated an extraordinary transformation. They have not received a single referral or been involved in any incidents. Instead, they have focused on their academics, achieving all As and Bs, and have become a role model for their peers by making a conscious decision to consequently do the right thing. In the picture to the left, I told her grandmother, um, that she should stand with her and she didn't want to do it because she said she couldn't walk. Well, I made her do it anyway.[1035.88][1035.88](Laughter) And then after it was older, over, I told her that was a memory for this child. If you want to, um, do a nomination, it doesn't have to be from a school. It can be from any, anyone. All you have to do is go to Do The Right Thing Palm Springs and write your testimony. And that's all you have to do. We have good kids here. Uh, like Naomi spoke, um, today. Usually I do things for Black History, but this kid, I've heard him talk before and I asked him to do it. And his little sister just kept waving and being proud of him. And on, uh, February 22nd, he is going to ride with me in the Black History Parade in Palm Springs. I'm done.
Thank you. Mayor Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Larry, I have to laugh at the Historical Society because I, I got caught up in the exact same thing when I first moved here. First organization I joined was the Historical Society. The next thing I know, I was programming the soup suppers. So welcome to the club. Um, and then again, talking about the autism certification, um, that was a program that was started, uh, kind of with Visit Greater Palm Springs. And, uh, we are this close as an entire region of being a Certified Autism Destination Region. And we had our, our meeting last week and I brought the fact that we had just gotten that there. So we're like now two little micro things away from having the whole, that was a nice thing. It almost put us over the top. We're, we're getting there. And I think it's really, really a great thing to have our rec department, uh, certified like that. Um, had the opportunity to take a private tour and speak at the Joshua Tree National Park Association donor and board event, uh, a couple of weekends ago. It was an absolutely beautiful day up in the park. It's just, you know, it was a gem of our desert. And, um, I was intrigued by their new junior ranger program and I'm hoping to meet with them and discuss how we can maybe bring some of that here for our kids. When I've had the opportunity to go on trips with our, with our kids when we take them places, it always saddens me that, that so many of our kids in the city that backs up to Joshua Tree National Park have never really been able to explore our outdoors and our deserts. And these kids don't often know what's right in their own backyard. And we need to fix that. And Roberta and I are working on something, uh, for the rec department based on a program in Utah. And I'm hoping this summer we can really kick that off because these kids need to be outdoors and they need to be out in our trails and in our mountains. And we have so many trails just backed up right into the city that, that these kids don't know about. And so we need to, we need to work on that. Um, and I mentioned, we had the veteran, Visit Greater Palm Springs JPA Board Meeting. Um, I had to hand over the chairman's gavel to Indio Councilmember Wayman Furman, who takes over from me. I served two years as the chair and we rotate chairs every two years. It was an honor to be the first person from Desert Hot Springs to serve as chair of that body. And I want to thank the mayor for appointing me back in 2018 and for reappointing me again, so I can continue to annoy them. Um, and following that meeting, we had a, a couple of hotel developers who were interested in purchasing a property here. And we go through this all the time as council members. And, um, so we met with them and, uh, they're looking at buying the old bubbling Wells Ranch property and took them to Cabot's where Irene's left, but Irene gave them a, a personal tour and looking at some other properties. So fingers crossed that, uh, that will develop into something. And, uh, that's all I've got.
Mr. Pitts.
So here's my city council update. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. I recently had the opportunity to attend the California League of Cities Mayor's and City Council Academy in Garden Grove, Orange County alongside Dirk Voss. He just spoke about that. City Councilmember Dirk Voss. This event took place from January 29th to the 31st, and it proved to be incredibly valuable, offering numerous insights and takeaways. The seminar included two mandatory classes for city government leaders as required by California law, each lasting about two hours. This new leadership orientation provided us with the knowledge and tools needed to serve our community more effectively in roles as city council members. The seminar also served as a timely reminder of our shared commitment to enhancing the quality of life for our neighbors. So here's some takeaways. I've received several inquiries from community, um, online, different platforms about the insights that I stipulated or spoke of. And so some of those are this. Some, I would think some of the major takeaways is improving transparency in local government. You know, while we are making strides, you know, in communicating city issues, there is always room for improvement. Another important takeaway was the understanding that as public servants, we serve at the pleasure of you. And your voices and visions must always guard our decisions and actions. Thank you. And that concludes my update. I yield back.
Thank you very much. Uh, my report's pretty short today. We had our strategic planning session here at the city council chambers for a couple of days and hopes to develop a plan. And now the city council's been given direction by a city manager, um, been given a request by a city manager to put together some of our, uh, top priorities. So we'll be working on that and hopefully developing that, which will lead to, um, some better direction for the future. The Palm Springs International Film Society, which oversees the short and, um, Palm Springs International Film Festival, they, uh, usually go out during the film festival and they do tours of each of the schools and show a short film. Um, and, uh, they were at Desert Hot Springs High this morning. So I was actually able to go do a welcome and welcome them. And I think about 50 or 60 of our kids in our community at the high school were able to, to view a short film. I had to leave early. And I believe the director or the writer was going to be there to talk to them afterwards. So it was pretty cool. Um, met with the senator or, if you hadn't seen it because in the politics, there's a, a new senate district that was drawn and Senator Ocho Bog was the senator who won the seat for, that will represent us going forward. So I was able to introduce myself to her today via Zoom with the city manager and talk through that. Had multiple meetings with, uh, concerned, uh, well, I had multiple meetings with some leaders of our community and then a concerned, um, I guess she's a constituent. She's really close to the state limits of Desert Hot Springs. Her name is Cindy Nance. I wanted to, they say thank you. She's actually on the community council for Desert Edge. And she came into my office today to talk about some, um, mutual, um, issues that we have with, uh, road safety. Um, met with Jeff Baumann, Barbara Eastman on, um, their, uh, Jeff represents Cabot's and Barbara represents the women's club. Um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I've opened my hours again on Tuesdays, trying to meet with all the different groups and chairs of, uh, all the different, uh, organizations to talk about things going forward. Uh, if you haven't seen the announcements of Little League, um, please, uh, if you want to sign up, uh, we're taking signups right now for Little League. And if you want to volunteer for Little League, there's plenty of room for umpires, coaches, and volunteers, scorekeepers. CVAG, Coachella Valley Association of Government Transportation met yesterday and on the agenda, two things that were halfway important at Desert Hot Springs. Uh, one is when I was chairman a couple of years ago, we commissioned a, uh, an ad hoc committee to look at Interstate 10, beautification of Interstate 10, the road conditions of Interstate 10. Um, and there was a whole parameter of that, some of the side roads, uh, some of the access points, which has led to some studies that are being done now, the upgrade of Varner Road. Um, still trying to get word on when they're going to actually fix Interstate 10 because I know it's pretty bumpy through there now. But, um, one of the offshoots of that is Riverside County Transportation was doing a study in Beaumont Banning Area on traffic, uh, impacts. We all know when there's a major weekend or a festival that it's almost impossible to get out of town, right? You know, three, four hours just to get to, get to the, uh, Beaumont, Cherry Valley, Twitch there, um, the 60 and I-10. So they did the study, they were awarded a grant, they did a study, the best they can come up with, because the state of California won't allow anyone to add more lanes. It's against the law now. So they believe adding more lanes builds more capacity. I don't get that thinking, but I'm not the professional in that realm of the state. So the only thing that they could come up with is either you build, uh, you make an express line, which they looked at the cost of that. Uh, but their, their big take out of this was add meters to most of the on and off, or the onramps along the Beaumont Banning Area, which I think we all have an opinion about what a meter is really going to do to traffic there. But we were able to, I, I again talked about what is important for the Coachella Valley. Some of my most important projects are outside of the city limits, which Interstate 10 is important to me. It's, it's a well-traveled road. We've got more truck traffic that will be on the roads as, as warehouses are developed and more need for those, those products are needed. Um, we're going to see, we still see a huge choke point, uh, happening in the Palm Desert area on a regular basis now, uh, near Cook Street where it goes to three lanes. It's constantly backing up. Again, I was traveling the other day and thought there was an accident on the road and it just was cars bottling up. So there's a lot more to be done. I'll keep you updated as we go forth on that. But they did study, because they were doing the Banning Beaumont study, they studied from, uh, I studied to Whitewater and then they studied from Whitewater to, I believe, Cook Street. Gave us some information that I think we already knew, but we'll see where we can get with it. The other grant that the Coachella Association of Governments received was a Cool Streets Grant. Uh, it's a programming grant for, uh, affordable housing neighborhoods. They found that there's a material that you can put on streets that are blacktop and will cool it and bring, and help with climate control. It's been done in Europe. And I forget exactly what somebody, one of the, uh, members of the committee actually talked about it a little bit, but it actually brought the, it brought, I believe she said, four or five degrees cooler in that city because of putting this, uh, material on top of asphalt so that the sun doesn't beam off. It is hot. So there's a grant. They're going to study it. They're going to see if it's needed in certain areas of our, of our valley. And then we'll see where it goes from there. It's something to think about for the future, I guess. And that's all I have for the report. We're going to move to public hearings. Item number three is abatement cost report appeal fee. Ms. Newsom.
Good evening, mayor and city council. So the item before you is a resolution to adopt an abatement cost report appeal fee. The city has established procedures in Title IV requiring a code compliance officer to issue an abatement cost report following an abatement. The proposed fee would allow an individual or an entity to file an appeal of that abatement cost report. The proposed fee would be at 100% of cost recovery at $795.74. Please note that there's a typo in the fiscal impact section of the report and the verbiage should read that the city processes approximately two abatement cost report appeals per year with an approximate annual revenue at $1,759.48. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, this will be a time for, um, council to ask any questions of staff before we open the public hearing. No one? No one? All right, we're going to open the public hearing at this time and we'll take public testimony in favor, opposed, or neutral position. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Last call. I see nobody coming forth. We're going to close the public hearing at this time and we'll put back up for discussion or motion.
It's moved. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Please vote. Did you? That's the, oh no, we have one more public hearing, Little League fees. Ms. Walmsley?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, city council. In 2022, the longstanding Little League program, a local Little League program, risked losing their local charter due to challenges with the overall management of the league. Following those challenges, the city of Desert Hot Springs was asked to take over the facilitation and management of the local Little League program by District 58 Little League, under the umbrella of our recreation programming to ensure the continuity of the program for the youth within the community. At the time, the program had a community sponsor for the 2022 season that covered all costs associated for the program, including registration fees and uniforms. Prior, previous seasons, however, did require registration fees to be covered by families. So they just had the community sponsor for that one season. In 2023, the community sponsor was unable to continue with that commitment. As a way to acclimate the community back to a fee-based program, registration was set at $25 per player for the 2023 season and $75 for the 2024 season, which is more in line with the fees that were in place prior to the community sponsor and the city taking over the program. Since taking on Little League, staff has worked closely with volunteers of the program to build a strong volunteer advisory board comprised of parents, family, and community members to assist with providing the best program for the youth in our community. This volunteer body works closely with our program specialists to provide feedback and guidance on actions that affect the local Little League program. This advisory body proposed raising the fees again this season to keep pace with the cost of the program. A fee study was conducted that sets, that would set 100% of cost recovery at a level that is well above the recommendation of the advisory body and at a rate that is unfeasible to all members of the community. City staff does recommend the following fee schedule as proposed by the volunteer advisory body with an option for flexible payment arrangements. Just to put it into perspective, if we look at the Nexus Fee Study, all the costs associated with the program, and then you average that out, divide it by the average number of players within the program, it would be well over $800 per, for registration per player, which obviously is not feasible. And so the registration recommendation, again, in line with previous seasons, would be $75 for early registration per player. So that's for the first month of registration. We want to encourage early registration. After that first month, the registration would raise up to $95 and then late registration would be $125. Again, this is at the recommendation of the volunteers that sit on that advisory body, which is comprised of parents and community members that participate in Little League. That concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll entertain questions from the council. Anyone?
So I gotta say, at first, when I first read the staff report, I was like, $95? That seems like a lot of money. But after speaking with staff and better framing that, I understand that, you know, there will be some relief in the form of like a payment plan, if that's what someone wants to do. And which, you know, that payment plan could also help families manage these monies more easily. So for that reason, I'm supportive of this.
Any other comments, questions before I open the public hearing? Open the public hearing at this time. I'll take any testimony in favor, opposed, or neutral position. See nobody coming forth. Final call. I will close the public hearing at this time and just make a quick comment. It's, I think we, I'm very active in Little League and we've tried for many years to get many donations to make the cost as low as possible. We unfortunately had a long time commitment that didn't last very long for full, for full coverage of Little League fees, because the company was really big on baseball, but unfortunately they went away. And so it comes back to what is affordable, and I think this is very affordable for youth sports. I think it's the lowest of all three, the maiden youth sports in our community, let alone, my daughter goes to high school and I thought, oh, I don't got to pay those youth sports fees anymore for Little League and I'm paying more for her to go to high school if she had to buy a bat and can't even, don't even ask me how much that bat costs. New bag, new shoes, all that stuff. But, so my point to this is I do think it's fair and I'm glad we're fixing this. No other comments, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Little League fees as recommended.
Second.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll move to the administrative calendar audited financial statement for fiscal year 2324. Mr. Buckheim's not here, but Tiffany is.
Good evening, mayor and council. We have Sophia here from the Poon Group with a presentation for us.
Great. Yes. Yeah. We're missing the PowerPoint.
That was sent last week, Gerald.
Why don't we, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll go to the next. Can you do it without it or you need the PowerPoint?
I can present based on this.
Why don't you present on that and then we'll put, we'll make sure the PowerPoint's put up on the city website for review. And I think audits are riveting, but I think we'll just focus on you rather than the screen.
Sure. Jeremiah's looking at me. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Sophia. I'm Sophia from the Poon Group. I'm the engagement partner for the city's June 30, 24 year-end audit. And what I will go through tonight, including the scope of work, the required communications in accordance with professional standard, overview of the financial statements, that will be a little bit interesting with our presentation slides, I will try, and key pension information.
Oh, look at that, look at that, look how respectful Gerald is.
Here we are. Thank you. And last would be our audit result. So the scope of work includes audit of the city's basic financial statements, housing successor compliance audit, agree on procedure applied to the appropriation limit schedule, which is known as skin limit, and agree on procedures applied to the user use tax, UUT. So in accordance with professional standard, as an auditors, we have some responsibilities that we need to fulfill as well, which include form and express an opinion, whether the financial statements that have been prepared by the management with your oversight are fairly presented in all material respect in accordance with accounting principle generally accepted in the United States of America. And our responsibility also includes to perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance instead of absolute assurance. The reason for that is because we did not do 100% of the testing and we did sampling based on our risk assessment. So that's why only reasonable assurance can be obtained about whether the financial statements are free from material statements. We were also required to consider internal control of financial reporting. However, such considerations were solely for the purpose of determining our other procedures, not to provide any assurance or issuing opinion on that. So again, in accordance with professional standard, AUC Section 260, we are required to communicate those with charge with governance. Here we determine the council members are those charged with governance, that's why I'm here tonight. So throughout the whole entire audit, we comply with all the relevant ethical requirements regarding independence, the independence, including independence in mind and independence in appearance, especially related to those non-audit services that are provided to the city, including drafting out the financial statement based on the trial balance and the information schedules provided by the finance department. And also the city disclosed all the significant accounting policies in the note one to the financial statements, which is pretty important and because it dictates how the financial statements were prepared. So we highly recommend the financial readers to read through that. And in accordance with US GAAP, the management was also required to make some estimates. There were some significant estimates, including the investment reported at fair market value and also depreciation and amortization on capital asset and also the net pension liability, which is purely estimated based on CalPERS. Well, it just moved automatically. There are some sensitive disclosures that we also recommend the reader to read through that, including note one, summary of significant accounting policies, note nine, defined benefit pension plan, which is CalPERS plan. I will go into details in the later slide. And note 13, contingencies and commitments. And we are happy to say there were no material uncorrected statements. And from title to time, the city's management might seek out different opinions with other accountants. To the best of our knowledge, there were no such consultation regarding the audit procedures or accounting matters. And we encountered no significant difficulty in dealing with the management. We did not have any disagreement with the management in terms of accounting treatments or any audit procedures that we performed. Now I will move on to overview of the financial statement. So the first set is the governmental activity summary, which including all the governmental funds and then the city's internal service fund. So from the slide, you can see the net position ended with 71.4 million compared to last year, 60.1, which was an increase by 11.4 million dollars. So the net position includes three different categories. The first one is the net investment in capital assets, which include the city's capital asset, the CIP projects, net with related debt. And the second category is the restricted net position, which came from external restrictions or enabling legislation. And the last category is the unrestricted, you could see the city with a deficit, which many result came, result from the net pension liability. And the governmental activity continued, this is the income statement portion. So the program revenue recognized by the city during the year was 33.8 million dollars, net with the expenses 44.8 million, that resulted in the net cost of services 10.9 million dollars. And the city also has general revenue, which includes tax revenue and also investment income, which was about 22.3 million, that resulted in the change in the position, which is an increase by 11 million dollars. So here's a ratio that we would like to talk about as well, that's the cost of services to tax revenue. So in 2022, the percentage was about 54%. That means $1 of the tax revenue collected by the city, 54 cents spent on the cost of services that provided to the public and compared to last year is 112%. And this fluctuation from year to year depends on how much grand revenue that the city recognized. And now I'll move on to the general fund. It's a more narrow focus, focused on the main operating fund, but we also consider the public safety special revenue fund together. So the total fund balance ended with 70, 7.6 million compared to last year, $9 million. There are five different categories under general fund. The first one is non-spendable, which includes prepay and deposits. And the second category is restricted, again, which came from external restrictions or enabling legislation. And then the committed fund balance, which came from the council direction, which was about $4 million. And the assigned fund balance, which came from the management, which was about five, half million. And that resulted in the assigned fund balance with 2.4 million dollars. So the assign, add your assign and commit fund balance with together, that you have for, compared to your annual expenditure is 14%. So the income statement, the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balances for the general fund and combined with public safety special revenue fund. The revenue recognized during the year is 32.5 million, net with your expense expenditures incurred, 32.9 million. So you have revenue under the expenditures by a half million. And you also have the other financing uses, which was transferred out about $1 million. So that resulted in 1.4 million decrease in general fund. So here's the five-year trend analysis on the general fund balance. So the, from 2020, the fund balance came up from 11.8 million to almost 13.7 million in 2022 and it went, it went back down to 7.6 million in 2024. From what we were aware, the city management is also aware of this and working on building up reserve. So now I'll move on to the key pension information. So the city joined CalPERS for two plans. The first one is the miscellaneous plan. From the slide, you can see the total pension liability ended with 20 million, net with the addition of possession, the investment held, 15.4 million. So the net pension liability is 4.6 million. The funding ratio is about 77%, which is really comparable to last year and the contribution made during this current fiscal year is $735,000. So the safety plan, the total pension liability was for 40.4 million and the plans for addition and possession was 28.7 million dollars. The net pension liability ended with 11.6 million. So the funding ratio is 71%, dropped a little bit from last year, 72%. And which is really purely estimated and then it depends on the assumption and the actual study and also the investment rate, investment rate, rate of return and the contribution made during the year is 1.4 million compared to last year's 1.5 million. This what brings to the audit result. So I'm happy to say that we issued a modified opinion, which is the best opinion that the CPFAN can render. It's also known as a clean opinion. That means the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respect. Significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. All the estimates are reasonable and the disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statement. We are required to report other results. We reported, we have reported two formal findings. The first finding is related to internal control of financial reporting and the procurement process. The second finding was related to internal control of compliance and compliance with monetary eligible expenditures and reporting of affordable housing. All the details are attached in our report package. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Before I open it up for public comments, do we have any questions from council to our consultant? Yes, go ahead.
Like you did with public utilities for the police department, I'd like for you to do the same thing going forward for Measure P, to show that we've done everything that was supposed to be done.
Anyone else? All right, we'll open up for public comments. Anybody would like to make any public comments on the presentation? See nobody coming forth, we'll close public comments and I'll entertain, do you need, this is just a receiving file. Thank you so much for doing the work you guys have done for our community and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item six, which is the appointment of a delegate and alternative delegate for the 2025 Southern California Association of Government SCAG Annual General Assembly. Mr. Seriano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The SCAG 2025 General Assembly will be held in Palm Desert at the JW Marriott on Thursday, May 1st through Friday, May 2nd. Each year, SCAG member cities select a delegate and alternate representative to participate at this annual meeting. The delegate or the alternate in the absence of the delegate will have the opportunity to propose any policy matter for determination by the general assembly in the form of a proposed resolution and/or to propose revisions to SCAG's bylaws. Proposed resolutions and/or bylaws revisions will be reviewed by the SCAG's Bylaws and Resolutions Committee and Regional Council before being considered at the regional conference and general assembly meeting. With that said, staff's recommendation, recommendation is to appoint a delegate and alternate for the SCAG General Assembly. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. I know that we have one member of our council that's actually on the regional council, which would be Mr. Gardner. I would suggest that we appoint him as the delegate. Anybody want to arm wrestle for the alternative or the alternate?
Mr. Mayor, I would have interest in that.
Mr. Pye, Mr. Pitts, do you Mr. Pye, Mr. Pitts, do you want to arm wrestle him for it?
No.
I didn't think so. So we have a recommendation to appoint Mr. Gardner as a delegate and Mr. Voss as the alternate. Is there any public comments on that? Nobody coming forth, that'll be my motion. Is there a second? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Dirk was looking for an arm wrestling contest though. Oh, sorry. We had one item pulled from the consent calendar, reject bids for construction for the John H. Furby Aquatic Center improvements. Mr. Porres isn't here, who's going to handle that?
I got it over here. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On April 2nd, 2024, City Council approved the adoption, or adopting a resolution of the City Council authorizing participation in and authorizing the city manager to approve all arrangements and necessary CDBG advancement requests. The advancement of CDBG funds for, from Riverside County to undertake the rehabilitation of the Furby Pool. On May 15th, 2024, the City Council award a professional service agreement with Aquatic Design Group for design, engineering, and construction for the John H. Furby Aquatic Center pool renovations in the amount of $84,000. On November 13th, 2024, City Council, City of Desert Hot Springs issued a notice of inviting bids for construction for the John H. Furby Aquatic Center improvements. On December 5th, 2024, city staff received and publicly opened three bid packets. On December 12th, 2024, City Council approved staff's recommendation to award the construction contract agreement to the lowest responsive bidder, USA Construction. On December 13th, 2024, a bid protest letter was received by, received by California Waters. The bid protest was received within the 10 calendar days after the bid protest, after the bid opening date of December 4th, 2024, per the bid protest procedures as outlined in the project specifications. Staff received the bid protest letter and on December 17th, 2024, sent a letter to USA Construction requesting a formal response. On January 9th, 2025, USA Construction submitted a response. The reasons for rejecting the lowest bid and all bids are, the first one would be USA's construction was deemed non-responsive, the schedule impacts the high school swim team's schedule, and then also the remaining amounts of the bids would be outside our budget. So staff is recommending City Council reject the lowest bid from USA Construction as being, as both non-responsive and non-responsive, reject all bids and directs, directs staff to move forward with redesigning of the improvements to include the design and construction of the pool and the splash pad and authorize a change order, increasing the redesign cost of $10,000, increasing the professional service agreement with Aquatic Design Group for design for, from $84,000 to an amount not to exceed of $94,000. This is the staff report. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Yes, before we do that, let me take public comments and I'll get questions answered. Any public comments? See nobody coming forth, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, my reason for pulling this was just rather simple. The Furby Pool has been high on the list of community wants and needs for a long time and we have, as a council, been promising to get the work done and get it done and hopefully have it open year-round this year. And sad, it's probably not going to happen again this year, but I wanted the public to know the reasons why we had to do that. And as unfortunate as it is, it is still a priority of this council and of the city and I want to reassure the public that we are working on it and we will get it done. It's just going to take a little bit longer and I appreciate the update and the thoroughness of that, Mr. Haker, and I think that answers all the questions I have.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion?
I move that we follow through with rejecting the bids for the construction of the Furby Pool and send it back out again.
As soon as it comes up on the screen, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll move, we have another section of public comments. Anyone in the audience to make public comments that didn't make them at the beginning? Yes, Mr. Bowen?
Mr. Mayor and council members, it's a privilege to be here tonight. I wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday morning, 11 o'clock, at the Seventh Day Adventist Church, address 11711, Palm Drive, we are celebrating Black History Month. And we have a special program and our former pastor, Curtis Wright, will be making the presentation and I think it will be very interesting and everyone is welcome to come. He has an interesting history here in Desert Hot Springs. When he first became our pastor, his first greeting was to get handcuffed at the church and I had to come down and identify him as our pastor. That's kind of a dramatic introduction to a city. Fortunately, I don't think that happens. We had a different police department, different leadership then, but we have to consider how different it is to be in the minority. And he has a wonderful presentation made and there'll be free lunch afterwards. I'd like to address, we've had all these problems with the accidents and everything, but we have a street in this city that's entirely in jurisdiction of our city. And I've been talking about this for three years. Hacienda Avenue. The paint is faint. It is so faint at night, I stay off that road because it is not safe for my car. I've suffered, last year I suffered two flat tires from that faint paint at night. And I've heard from our city staff, it's our next project, it's our next project for three years. You know, we don't have to wait for the whole nine yards. I was at the Miracle Springs and Desert Hot Springs Spa Hotel for four years and I was in charge of buying paint and I bought a lot of paint and I've got news for everyone in town, paint is cheap and we have the equipment. Why can't we run some paint trucks to repaint the lines? You don't have to wait till you tear up the whole road and everything. Paint is cheap and we can fix that, make it safe, and so this poor old man can drive down Hacienda Drive to get home. Thank you for allowing me to talk and again, Black History Month, this Saturday, 11 o'clock.
Thank you, Tom. The planning commission will meet on February 11th, the public safety commission will meet on the 13th, the city council will meet again on the 18th, all at 6:00 PM on those dates. The city council recessed back to closed session. Thank you.[1770.37][1770.37]